I'm going to go ahead and call the December 11th, 2023 Cambridge City Town Council meeting to order, and we're going to start with prayer.
Well, Father in heaven, we thank you for such a wonderful day, Lord. We just ask that you be with us through this meeting, that you give us calm hearts and clear minds and a spirit of cooperation as we come together, as we seek to lead our community in whatever direction you have, Lord, and may we listen to your voice in all things, in Jesus' name we pray.
Why do we look to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Sure. Just some sort.
Here.
Hi, Amy.
Here.
Debbie McGinnly.
Here.
Jim McLean.
Here.
And Jeff Mardis is an accent.
Has everybody had a chance to look at the mannequins?
Make a motion to accept the mannequins.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In the claims?
Make a motion to accept the claims.
I'll second that, too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In the financials?
Make a motion to accept the financials.
I'll do that.
Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, guys. Um, there's a seat here, there's a seat there, if you don't want to see. Okay. Okay, so here's this sign.
Okay, next is a public hearing. Yeah, I guess. You want to go ahead to Anne?
Yeah, we'll have a need to do something. We're going to come back to the public hearing.
Okay, Annie?
Um, I have three items today. The first one is a pay application number five for the 1B project. And the total for this pay application is $483,535.80. And a lot of the work Kuli did this pay period was some of the yard piping at the industrial park for the wells. They did the aerator chair replacements, the filter new year replacements, they're continuing with the town well cleanings. Kind of the up next, upcoming items are high service pump and clay dollar replacements at the industrial park and coring improvements there. So I'll just need Steve's signature on this one. I'll just bring up the other ones while I'm talking to you. We also have two amendments. One of them is for, it's amendment two, and this amendment is taking the remaining funds that were in the 1A contract with Westler and allocating them to the 1B project. And then amendment three is pretty much the same thing, it's just accepting them into the 1B contract. And these two amendments will need Stephen and Sherry's signatures. So.
Hi, Stephen.
Does someone want to make a motion? It's not me.
I'll make a motion that you sign the amendment. Amendment's number two, three.
All signed.
All in favor?
Well, I have to sign yours, too. Do second that, please.
And in that pay app that's on the, there's, at the bottom of it, there's a, do they always turn in this condition or waiver of meaning at that?
Yeah, they do.
It does mention the town Liberty at the bottom for some reason. They may want to revise that.
I'll fix that.
Like the last paragraph.
Okay. Yeah, Kuli's working on a project with Wester and Liberty, too, so I'll get them to fix that.
She's actually wants you to sign that, too.
It's a review of the pay out, too.
No, yeah.
No, these are just the minutes.
I'll go ahead and sign all of these. Get them some water. Liberty needs water, too.
Everyone needs water.
Everybody needs water. Did I need to sign both of them?
Yeah.
I got that one.
How are you going to get this one?
Yeah.
Hey, Bob.
Hello.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve this, sign this payout.
I will make that motion to approve the payout number five, right? That's presumed.
And so the application number five? Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
I'll sign your copy. Is that all you had, Annie?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to move back, since Bob's here, to the public hearing. 411 and 415 West Front Street and 420 West Main Street.
Actually, two separate hearings, just two different.
Okay.
And as you know, Ken has deemed these as unsafe properties based on his recommendation that the properties be destroyed. A hearing was absolutely required, otherwise property owner can request a hearing, but in this instance, because of the remedy sought, hearing is required, giving people a chance to come to present anything contrary to what the order has. And at that time, the council can either affirm that order, rescind the order, or modify the order based on evidence presented by the property owners.
All right. So does anyone hear from the property?
She's the second. Which one, which one are we doing first?
I guess 411. Okay, does anyone hear from 411?
I got that certi- certified letter I sent him, came back to me today. But I also had sent them another letter a couple of weeks ago in the regular mail, but I've not heard nothing from them.
Came back unsigned? The certified?
The certified, yep.
By him giving it to the address shown for their property taxes, it is good service for this purpose. What council can do now is still take, act upon, even though they don't show, whether if you want to affirm Ken's order, modify it or rescind it, if you do affirm it, then you have to give the people 30 days' opportunity to appeal this to the court. If the court does not do anything, or if they don't appeal it, then this council can take it upon itself to perform the work that was requested. That, of course, would initially be at your cost, you can later then attempt to get that through a sheriff's sale of the property. If the anticipated cost is more than $10,000, you have to put it out for bid. If it's under $10,000 anticipated, your town people can do the work themselves, but you do have to wait for that period for them to appeal to the court before you do go and work. But you can still vote tonight if you choose to go ahead and perform the work pending that appeal, or you can hold it till next month's meeting, see if an appeal has been filed, whatever your choice is.
How long have we been dealing with this property?
First, I think the first thing would be to take action upon the order itself, to either affirm, reject, or modify.
And you're talking about both houses, right? 411 and 415.
Just 411.
411.
She is two, though, okay.
But it's in separate letters on each.
Then if you, you may want to do then each, each house separately, even though it's the same property owners, so you're really going to end up with three potential orders denied, 411, 415 West Front Street, and 420 West Main Street. So take 411. Ken, has there anything happened that would change your mind on that order given to 411?
No, but still, same status it's been in.
Does council have any reason to believe to make any changes to that order for 411? If not, then I'd, under the motion to affirm the order for 411 would be improper order right now.
I'll make a motion to affirm Ken's request on 411. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ken, on 415, anything changed that would affect your order that you gave for that to be torn down because of its unsafe nature?
No.
Council have any problems, questions, or?
Are you 415?
No.
No, she's going.
I'll make that same motion for 415 as well.
To confirm Ken's order?
To confirm Ken's order, yeah.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then you want to go ahead with 420 before you go back and decide what you want to do with 411 and 415? Do you want to go ahead and think about 420?
Let's go ahead and close out these two.
The other two, okay. Ken, do you have any estimates on cost of what it would take to tear those down?
I've not talked to anybody, but compared to some numbers I've gotten when we did the one on 4th Street, I'm going to say you're probably looking at somewhere around, I'd say somewhere probably around $8,000, since they are just single-story homes and, you know, and they're not even as big as that building was.
At that cost, you could do it yourselves, but you have personnel and you feel comfortable doing that, or would you rather submit that out for bid?
I'd rather submit it out.
And that's each? $8,000 each?
Possibly, or it could, I mean, it could come in at that for both of them. I don't know. I'd just have to get ahold of some people.
They're going to get 30 days to appeal anyway.
But a proper motion now would be for at least have Ken get estimates of that cost.
That's why I think we should probably do, use that 30 days to get estimates to tear it down.
That way we'll have something good to go with.
Do you have an option for that?
A motion?
I would, I would make that motion to use the 30 days to get quotes to tear down both houses.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, do we have to notify?
Yeah, I'll put together a notification to the people saying that you have affirmed it, that they do have, we have to give them notice that they have that right to appeal to the court, and absent that, the town can move forward on its own.
And how's that delivered to them? How's?
I'm going to try to do that, even, I think we ought to try to do that personally, even, in fact, I'd hit almost three ways, have it certified mail, attempt personal service, and put it in publication, just to be safe.
I agree.
And was that for Bo? Was that what you made the motion for, Bo? 415 and 411? Okay. So I guess we can move on to 420 West Main. And you're, you're the owner.
Yep.
So what are your plans with that?
I don't have any plans. I've looked into tearing it down, and he's given me some recommendations, but I'm a single mom with two kids, and I don't have 15 grand to tear it down, and that's my estimate, because it's a two-story house, so mine's going to be a little bit more flexier. So I'm out of auctions, I don't know what else to do.
Is there any option to sell the property?
And I've been looking into that, like, like through Indianapolis and stuff, and I finally got an offer, but they won't make an offer back to me. And the closest, and I had one that said they'd only give me like maybe a thousand, and then they disappeared. So I don't know if that was real or fake.
Do you own the property outright?
Yes.
There, there is a program coming available probably in the next few months through the county where it's possibility to purchase property. Might be a good option for you, but unfortunately, it's not.
There yet.
Not there yet. We just had a meeting with them, but it's for these type of situations. But I don't know what council thinks, that they're still, it came from, come from the help.
Right.
Like, and the EDC is actually running that, they're putting all the rules together now, and Ken was there at the meeting. They, when did they say, the 90 days they thought they'd have it done?
That's what they were hoping, have all that stuff ironed out.
Yeah. Is that something you'd be interested in?
Any, any options at this point?
Who would be purchasing the land then?
What they do is the program, they, it'd be a grant that would be issued, the county would buy it, but then they turn the property over to the city. And then the city would then be responsible for tearing down. Now, there might be money available to do that and help with that as well. And then we can decide what to do with the property, possibly sell it to the adjoining landowner. That's, that's kind of the same program that Richmond had in the last couple of years. They're leaning toward that, so.
It's a fairly tight property, they're going to get too, with the eyes on the street there. Yeah.
So would she get the money then, when it's, if it's purchased from?
Yes.
They would pay her?
Yes. Now, it'd only be up to the appraised value, so, you know, it may not be a lot, but, and only up to a certain, you know, there'd be a count as well, so I think it'd be more $1,000.
At this point, I'm just, I really want it out of my hands at this point, it's too much for me to take care of right now, especially with everything else going on. And I just got this new job, so I'm trying.
And you're not planning to get built back on there?
I mean, I was when I had money, before my ex-husband took it and ran, but that's, I had to do what I had to do just to, for my kids, so.
So do we want to table this, or?
I think we can table it.
I think we can affirm the fact that it's unsafe.
The order's proper.
Right. But then probably what we can do is put off any action on it for 90 days.
Just not move forward on it after that.
That's, that's what I would recommend.
So you want to make that motion?
Sure. I don't think Ken's finding that the property is unsafe.
That's two separate motions. One is confirming the order. Won't we do that?
That would be my motion, then.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then, of course, the remedy and any action this council would take, is motion to table for 90 days?
Yes, I would, I would make a motion that we table this for 90 days, awaiting the grant, possibility of a grant through the EDC for black people.
I'll second that as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you very much for coming.
So will I get like something in the mail saying what's going on?
Uh huh, let you know basically what we've just done.
Okay. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
See ya.
All right, moving on to unfinished business, so. Update on blighted properties, 411 North Plum, and updates regarding letters that have been sent to 502 East Main, 501 East Church, and we have new blighted forms received on 304 and 314 West Main. Ken?
The one on Plum Street, seems like that place changes all the time. I can drive by there, everything looks okay, and then I can drive by there another time, and I got other stuff sitting there. So I think that's one of those, it's going to be a, nap. The 501 East Church, I drove by there the other day, they did get rid of the mattresses that were leaning up out there against the garage. And then the, was it 420 East Main?
That's the one we just worked on. 502.
502.
All these numbers. I did know she's getting a lot more of the stuff outside the fins, but I don't think it's stuff that, the trash would just pick up, and so I did give her the number of somebody that might to get, for her to get a call or see if they'll come and haul the stuff off.
So does she have a timeframe once you gave her, once she paid her fine, then does she have a timeframe to get all this done? Or do you give her another fine?
I told her I'd work with her and see how she gets along with it, because she is making, getting the stuff out of the yard, and now she's just getting rid of it.
And they've just gotten the pre, pre-little letters, you've not made a finding on this, is that right?
This, this here was a, what property they had a bunch of trash in the backyard.
Okay, it was not, it was the other type of thing for unsightlyness?
Yes, unsightly. And like I said, I did send her one fine, and she did pay that fine. And she'd called and asked, you know, to work with her, she had had back surgery, doesn't get around real good, she has nobody to help her. So like I said, I sort of keep watching, and like I said, she's making progress getting that stuff out of the yard, but then it's getting it hauled off, is what, you know, she's at right now. And then the other two.
501 East Church. 501 East Church.
That was the one that had the mattresses and the ducts, and the mattresses are gone. I drove by there.
And we have two new ones.
Yeah, we got two new ones. 308 and 314 West Main.
Yeah, I drove, drove around and looked at those, I made some notes on the 314 to start, basically give them a preliminary letter on unsafe building, that just from some things I've seen on that one. The 308, the house may be okay, but I'm going to be sending them an unsightly property letter, because they did have a lot of trash in the backyard at that place.
So one's unsightly and one's going to be unsafe?
Yeah.
No, it's unsightly. Is that the blue house?
Yeah. And I actually. I've got her number for a guy with that company. Trying to get ahold of him, just talk to him and say, what are your plans with that place?
Which house is that? 314?
314.
That's an out state owner, right?
Yeah.
So next meeting, we should have something back from the preliminary notices you sent.
I'll be working on getting those preliminary letters out till by the next meeting, it'll be before the next meeting. And hopefully I'll hear something back on, something about that.
So 314 is just a notice that, just a warning letter, basically?
Yeah, basically a warning that, you know, there are things that could deem the house unsafe, and that's what that letter that I'll be working on going out to them.
308 is a letter that it's unsightly.
Unsightly, in the back, all the trash, and, I mean, there's, there's, there's some tires, mattresses, and a couch.
And you had posted fine on that, you had the 308, you were?
No, I've not even sent them a letter yet. This will be their first letter. Is that it?
That's it?
That's it?
So more unfinished business, a quote for a solar speed radar sign. So share you the information.
I gave you a copy of that Jim brought in with today, Jim King, and it's like the final cost is $6,850 for two. Can he advise the town to pay for one? If you think it's necessary to have it? Well, I think I gave you a copy too, Bob, if you feel.
I see, yeah, yeah.
So do we think it's necessary to have a?
I think we discussed it last, and they, they, I think they thought it would be helpful, so.
Yeah, this is me, I wasn't here, or?
That's right.
Yeah, I wasn't here, that's what I was talking about.
That's right.
Now, they're not, they, they realize the town would be in control of the software replacement.
Right. I think we'd, so we'd be able to move it if we wanted to, so.
Yeah, they're not stationary, they're like a little wagon, you can pull one hook up to a truck and move it wherever you want to. So.
Is that the kind you got a vote for? I thought it was going to be mounted on a pole or something.
Yeah.
I thought it was a mo, I thought it was a mobile kind that he was talking about.
It's still mobile, I think, it's movable, but it's.
You're still mounting on a pole, I was thinking.
That's the way I understood it.
Okay. So everybody thinks we want this, that you want?
I mean, I didn't budget for anything like that, but.
Yeah, I mean.
It's an opportunity to get to them for the price of one.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I'm not against it. If you think it would help just bring people's attention to the fact that they're coming into a new speed zone or whatever.
Certainly could be a deterrent for, you know, at least.
You guys can't be everywhere.
No. I think it'd be more beneficial for out of town people who pass through, not necessarily local people.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know.
So the question, is there any want a half on, is that the question?
I think so. I would make the motion that we partner with Cambridge City Main Street, pay half for $6,850 to purchase these and install them.
This has the, the software and everything, right? Is that what?
Yeah, it includes the software. Software battery pack.
So there's not going to be an additional, like, a fee, like a monthly fee or anything like that involved with this, or I don't know?
I think there's solar power. There's solar power.
Yeah, but I mean, the, the software pack is a.
Procedurally, are they going to buy two and you reimburse them for one? Are you going to buy both, they're going to reimburse you for one, or is each going to buy one?
Is the price the same for buying two at one time, or is the price different if we each buy one? I don't know.
Well, let's see.
Maybe we can clarify that.
This quote is for Cambridge City, so I'm guessing we would buy both and they would donate the half.
That would make the most sense.
Yes.
That you are the purchaser. Might even save some.
So it would come back to us as a donation from?
Yeah. They've agreed to make a, let's look at it this way, they've agreed to make a donation to pay for one if you guys are willing to buy the both with you paying for it.
Correct.
So it'd be a motion to buy both and accept their donation for the payment of half? Kind of kind of a motion? Is that your motion?
I'm in my motion. That we buy both of these and accept a donation for half from Cambridge City Main Street with the understanding that we control where they're placed, and we have control of the software. How's that?
I will second that.
Sounds good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, tell me where we're going to pay for that.
Do what?
Tell me where we're going to pay it from. So I know where to pay it from.
Yeah, we're not, we're not in the motion yet. I'm opposed to it, because I don't think it, they're, so. But I'm still outvoted, so I guess it's been different. You got to pay for it now.
Just have Steve sign something today.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll sign whatever, on the way out the door.
Under budget, it'd be under a number of things, Main Street equipment, police department, I know the chief doesn't want to come up on his budget, but, and you have potentially out of your art money that you have not spent.
You couldn't, I guess, if that, if it come out of that, then we wouldn't, then we wouldn't have to take it out of anybody's budget. Yeah, if we can use it for that, if I think, okay, yeah, then we'll take it. Perfect, then, let's do that.
So is that part of the motion now?
I think I heard that.
Yeah, that's another amendment to your motion.
Yeah, I mean, I mean that.
It's a two hand jam, say it over.
Where are you thinking of it from?
The art of money.
Oh, okay. I will amend my motion to pull that money from art.
Motion one point one.
Yeah. Okay. Great.
All right, new business, cemetery leases expiring.
That makes it sound like you're leasing your cemeteries off.
Yeah. I'm just reading one.
It is excess cemetery land.
Excess.
Everybody out.
Farm purpose, so it's a farm lease off a cemetery land that's out. I know in the past you've just done kind of one year at a time because of the potential of needing that extra land. I don't know if you're there yet or not. You just need to decide if you want to open that for bids again this year for another one year lease, two year lease, three year lease.
This is the farm ground?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think last year we did, I mean, we did it for two years.
Yeah, for two years' time.
Oh, we did, so it took two years?
They asked us, they asked us to do five, I think.
Oh, it went faster than I thought.
That just seems like last year.
Yeah, this one, this one says January first, twenty twenty-two to seven thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
So just last year, it seems like last year. I guess it's been, maybe it has been. I'm larger.
I watched one year.
Yeah, exactly. Mine is, yeah.
I would be fine with one year this time around if, um, we farm the ground. It adjoins it, there's a little uncertainty whether or not I will be farming that in the future after next year. And so if I don't have the ground to the north, I might not be interested in this cemetery ground. Uh, it's not a lot of ground and it's, yeah, there'd have to be some improvements because we can't get in and out through the gate that is there. Uh, we have to come in from the north side. So unless you guys want me to drive through the cemetery, I don't really think you want that, so.
We could wait one year then, and then we have the option next year to.
Yep.
Close that down if we need to. How far are we out from needing any of the ground?
We're below, yeah, we're, we're not looking to expand any of that yet.
So we're gonna put out for bid again for one year? Is that what you're saying?
We have to, but we can know that we're giving preference to who is already there, but legally we do have to put it out for a bid. So, you know, we put that kind of notice in for one year?
Yes.
So we don't need a motion on that? We don't need a motion for that?
Yes, we do, we do.
I'll make a motion if we put the cemetery land up for a one year lease again.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is motion to approve clerk and clerk treasurer's bond, office clerk and clerk treasurer's bonds.
Mine expires December thirty first. So, just your motion. I'll make that motion. We approve the bond.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And a motion to approve town attorney's contract with the town. Here it comes.
They got him out of his chair, dude.
No change. Inspired by some of my comments, too. It's exactly the same, that's.
Oh. Isn't it?
So, decided.
Decided not to do it.
No, no, you're right, so.
Well, then I'll make a motion we approve.
I mean, I wanna read this thing from.
Yeah, go right there.
You weren't here on that one.
So is that your motion, David?
Yes.
About a second.
Here are the two, I think I gave you one of the originals.
I'll second.
I was wondering that.
If you wanna talk about me, I can walk in.
I wanna see you swivel the room. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Here are the two originals.
Okay. Next on new business, charging tree services to use the burnt pile of the cemetery. Is that you, Ken?
Yeah. Years ago, when Michael Stuckey was superintendent, he had made it to where residents, if they're cleaning up their limbs in the yard and that, where they could bring them up to the cemetery and get rid of them. Well, over the years, that has gotten out of hand where there are landscapers, tree services doing work. Yeah, they're doing work in town and charging people to do this work, but then they're wanting to dump it all up there. And probably, I bet eighty percent of the stuff we burn up there comes from those type of businesses. Yeah. And I would like to start charging them something for every load they dump up there.
Have you thought about how you would charge them? Like how much and what kind of load you're talking about?
Well, most of them got these dump trailers that they come in with, that, that do the commercial work. And, you know, and I'm looking, I would think, you know, at least, I think we ought to charge them at least twenty-five dollars a load. Everything they come in there and just, you know, I guess we'll work it through the desk. And then when they come to get the key and that, you know, and we know, and we know how many loads they've dumped, send them an invoice.
So how are we gonna specify between them and a normal cemetery load?
I don't know.
We know who they are. You know.
So we'll just, we'll just say it for, it'll be just be for a commercial customer space.
Yeah, resident, if a resident, you know, picks up a part of a back pickup load of limbs and needs to get rid of, I'm not gonna charge them. And that's, I mean, that's how we know who's, you know, residents, if they dump anything, they're coming in a pickup truck. You know, these others come in with a trailer.
I think we have to specify so that it doesn't appear random, right? So we have, we, I think we can say it's a commercial.
Only a commercial business wanting to dump limbs up there would be charged.
You can do that.
Like I said, that's, I just, like I said, does this just gotten out of hand and?
You could also prohibit non-residents if you wanted to do that, and that's not just, if you wanna distinguish between residents and non-residents.
Well, how much, is, is it a pain in the neck for you guys for them to be up there doing that? I mean, does it cause a problem or?
Well, it's just, it just becomes, you know, next thing you know, we got a big old pile up there that we have to burn again.
Yeah.
You know, and here, you know, and you look at, you know, they're charging people to cut a tree down, pull bushes, whatever. And we became a place for them to dispose of that stuff and they don't have to go.
Well, I, I agree with you.
And we have to pay somebody to go out there.
Yeah, well, yes, but on my point, if, if it's becoming where it's an issue with, you know, having someone out there to do it, then maybe we wanna look at prohibiting anyone other than residents. I mean.
But then you, I mean, you, I mean, then you're gonna look at, you know, they're gonna say, well, I'm doing this for a resident. You know.
And they do say that. And they'll just charge the resident more.
So what do you think? How are you gonna charge them?
How much do you wanna charge them?
I, I'd say we ought to at least charge them twenty-five bucks for every load they dump up there.
I agree with that, it's just that they're gonna charge more for doing.
I think we either do that or we just prohibit one of them, or, you know. As is is not right.
Yeah.
You know, and I mean, because like I said, if, if, even if we decide to prohibit commercial people from dumping up there, well, then, you know, like I said, they may still charge residents more, but they'll just have to go find somewhere else to dump.
I'm for it.
I am too. I wonder if twenty-five's enough to be honest.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just gonna say at least that, you know, we decide we wanna charge more, you know, you know, whatever you guys feel too, but I just think at least that much is what it should be.
Also wonder if this time we do make sure that we limit it to residents too, I don't know.
So it's either a resident or a commercial business that we are charging?
See, and, you know, and that's the thing, you know, the stuff the commercial people dump there is supposed to be just from people in town and that. And so I, you know, I still think it should be that way, you know? They can't, you know, do a job in Richmond and haul it over here and haul it up to our cemetery. I still think it should be, no matter what they dump, it'll still be coming from people inside the, uh, city limits of Cambridge City.
I'm fine with charging commercial enterprises for dumping up there.
So basically two, two aspects of this. One, the load has to be coming from in town. And number two, if you are a for-pay person bringing it out, then you're charging. Otherwise, so a local resident could take their own out there free of charge.
Yes.
But if somebody else has been paid to do the hauling, that will be a charge for them, but the load still has to come from within town. So that would be basically the perimeters. Now it's just a matter of how much, but if you wanna do this.
Does everybody think twenty-five's enough?
What's it cost to go to the dump in Hagerstown? Cause I know when we're full and burning, that's where you go, so I'm not sure.
I don't know what they.
Is anybody know the dump in Hagerstown?
I, depends on what you're taking to, I mean.
What you're taking.
Just taking limbs and stuff, I'm not sure, or construction waste. It's not very expensive. It's not bad. Well, should we think about a dollar amount before we?
Are you getting a lot of traffic out right now? I mean, is it something we should act on immediately?
Don't have to do it immediately. Right now we gotta close down because there's an old room back there to dump anything until we burn it. And that, so, you know, right now nobody's, will be allowed to dump back there until we burn the pile that's there. And we tried to burn it last week and it was just too wet, get from all the rain that had been on it. Now here's something you can, if you wanna table it next month, you know, think about prices.
I'd like to think about what the amount's gonna be.
Yeah.
If we could table it till, till January and come back with a.
I don't think that's gonna hurt us at this point.
Yeah.
We've been getting by so far and, yeah, I, we don't wanna set it high enough that nobody shows, nobody comes, you know, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure where we're wanting to go with that. Are we wanting to deter people, are we wanting to incur business and make some money, or how are we going about this, so?
Okay, so we're on a table.
Let's think about it till next month.
Okay. Reports from committees or boards, does anybody have anything? Cemetery board hasn't met, so. Okay, well, we'll move on to staff reports, town marshal.
I don't really have anything. Seth should be here in a couple of minutes. He held up, got our, uh, little stuffed animal dogs in.
No, okay.
And fundraiser, so he's gonna show those to you, but he'll be here in a couple of minutes, so.
Okay.
We can come back to that.
Fire chief.
I'd like to reach and purchase four sets of turnout gear. Uh, we've got some that's coming out of compliance. Um, Tim has a fourteen, fourteen, I think, fourteen eighty-two. We didn't take it out CPI.
What, what is it?
Four turnout gear.
Turnout gear. Four turnout gear.
Yeah, we had, we just got his house, we got boots coming from Grant's.
I make a motion that we let Jeff buy four sets of turnout gear for them.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Gotta have it.
Yes.
Right now.
I'm here without them.
Good day.
You wanna talk to Bob for a moment?
Not that.
Public Works Superintendent.
I got a couple of things, um, you know, it's some, this is some stuff me and Jim had talked about at one time and it's something that had been not really talked a lot about, but I don't know if we need to pass some new ordinances or whatever, but to raise, you know, currently if somebody gets an ILP permit, all it costs them is two dollars.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I've done some checking, like with, uh, Hagerstown, and they charge twenty-five. So I, you know, I think we need to, you know, whether it's a, an amendment to the ordinance or what needs to be done to increase that from two to twenty-five dollars.
Our receipts, our receipts was wanting that.
Yeah.
Where do we see that?
We talked.
Yeah, we, we lose money on a.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so that's why, I don't know if we have to just change that ordinance to increase that number.
That's what you have to do, yeah. I can put that ordinance together for next month if that's what you desire.
I did. I think we all.
Yeah, we talked about that before, yeah.
That's, I think, raise it to twenty-five, that's, that's what Hagerstown charges.
That's what I thought, too. Passed through to do.
Yeah.
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 By about fifteen years.
And then the other thing is.
Thirty, thirty years.
Right now there's, I've not found nothing, but, you know, I get called for doing electrical inspections when people want their electric turned back on when it's been disconnected and that. And that's another thing I think we need to come up with and start charging for, you know, some kind of a permit or whatever if they're gonna have, if I've gotta go out and check their meter base and everything to get Duke to come and turn it on. And that's something else I think we need to, like the same thing, I'd say charge a twenty-five dollar fee.
And there certainly is nothing in that.
What's an electric permit cost?
We don't have that.
Okay.
So that's, you know, and that's what I'm trying to go through our permit.
Ours is thirty-five.
So that's what I'm trying to go through, they're thinking, you know, there's a lot of gray area with stuff on electric and that where, you know, a lot of like Hagerstown, that they do actually require, you know, an electrical permit, you know? Somebody's putting their shingles on their roof, they've gotta get, you know, they've got a lot of different things. And all of ours just sort of falls under this. And, you know, and I've relied on past superintendents, hey, if somebody's putting out a new shingles on their roof, did you, did you make them get a permit? No. So that's how I, you know, treat it.
So everything that falls under our blanket, our work permit that we issue?
Well, they don't even come and get any kind of permit.
But we're, but we still have an ordinance for them to get it.
Yeah, yeah. That, that's an actual, actual building. And that, we have an actual building permit.
But you're saying for shingles.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be considered just maintenance on a home or?
Yeah, and in the county, we don't do roof inspections unless they get into the structure.
Well, and that, and that's, and that's what, what.
We don't inspect shingles.
The only, only time he's ever had is people had to get a permit for doing a roof if they were, you know, if it was, they're changing the pitch of it or getting into the structure of it. But just to do shingles, we never.
Yeah, just re-roofing houses.
It never charges a permit for anything like that.
But the electrical would be like, you have to certify any electrical box when it's, or if it's disconnected and then reconnected.
If, if, if the meter's been pulled, Duke will not come out and hook it back up unless I'm over there and inspected it.
So it's a reconnect, it would be in association with a reconnect.
And that, and so like I said, you know, I go out, then I've got a paper I gotta fill out, fax to Duke. And then, so, you know, like I said, that's something else I think we need to look at starting to charge a fee on that end for all of that.
Yeah, that would be if you did an electric permit, that would probably cover that, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Thirty, thirty-five bucks.
If, if we, if we actually, you know.
Cause that's what.
People had to come out and get a electrical permit, yeah, that would be covered under.
Steve, for the county, is there a threshold, how much they have to spend before an electrical permit's required? Or maybe if they just change a light switch in their homes?
Thousand.
So if it's a thousand dollars or more, they have to get a county electric permit.
Or, or if they need to do a hookup, like, cause Duke, well, he doesn't, well.
A new structure or a reconnect.
I've never done, you know, cause all, everything in town's Duke.
See, we, yeah, okay, so Duke requires an inspection before they heat it back up. So he has to go out and look at it, or they won't turn it on.
And so that's exactly what you do in the county, too?
Correct. Except we have R E M C, R P and L, Duke, and we have all.
And is that associated with giving them a permit for it, or is it just?
They come in and get a permit. We don't go out without signing a permit, it's thirty-five dollars.
And if you don't go out, then the electrical company's not going.
They're not gonna hook it up. Yeah, we have to.
Then we could just mirror that kind of county ordinance and create one of our own if you want that.
Yeah.
Really good idea.
Yeah. Cause if, if we're not getting paid for him to go out, why do we wanna take the liability for him to say it's okay?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I can get a copy of the county's and do that for the next time, along with that other increase in fee if you want me to.
Right. And it's actually the electric company's requirement that, that it gets inspected before they hook it back up, so. It's a safety thing.
So that would be for an electrical upgrade, if they did a thousand dollars electrical upgrades?
Thousand, yeah.
Okay.
Or pull, because sometimes that might not have a cost to, you know, a little bit. So it sounds like that's what they need to, anytime that he needs to inspect, you wanna accrue a permit.
Absolutely, yeah.
With the cost.
Yeah.
And that one's thirty-five?
Thirty-five dollars with the county, and that might be a little bit low, I think we're lower than everybody else, but.
The only other thing is, I just wanted to, just update, me and Mike met last week, discussed some stuff with his, being his new, his role as public works commissioner, talked about some things, and then we're gonna meet after the first of the year and put a list, I guess is what you wanna call the things that we, you know, want to accomplish in the next year.
And we're gonna meet at the midpoint between each of this regularly scheduled council meetings, we'll be meeting once a month, somewhere in that midpoint, just to make sure that we're all, communications are flowing like they should.
Good.
You know, that's, and it'd be a point where then like, you know, if you guys have any concerns, you can let him know, and he can bring it to me at that, at me and me and.
And vice versa.
Yeah, vice versa, if I have a concern about something, that I can let him know and he can communicate with you guys.
Great.
Sounds good. Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
County attorney.
Got a few things, number one, I think I emailed all of you, we finally have received our interlocal agreement with Wayne County for the collection of stormwater fees. And you recall, this has been a long process in convincing them that they had to do that, and that we are now, and agreeing to do it, and it costs a fifteen dollar, fifteen hundred dollar upfront on getting all of their systems ready for these fees, and then from that point on, each year, one dollar per parcel, which we renegotiated, they initially wanted five, we got down to one dollar. And so this will bring in over forty thousand dollars a year, this is a three-year term to go concurrently with the current county auditor, but we think it would then be renewed thereafter as well. So it's highly recommended that we approve this interlocal agreement with the county so we can get started, and next year we will be receiving those through tax payments.
Yay.
Forty to one return.
Yeah.
One hundred dollars, so, yeah, it's a good deal.
Have a motion for that.
I would move we approve this agreement with county, interlocal agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Paul.
Lot of work. How many copies do we need?
Two, just if you sign both of those, I think there's a place for each of your signatures near the end page. Secondly, we received back from the state, their seventeen eighty-two report, which is their review of our budget, and I'm happy to report, they approved our budget in identical form of what we presented for all accounts, very happy for that. The only different numbers is they changed some of the miscellaneous revenue, these are different funds that come in from the state financial institution tax, it's off twenty, forty dollars, cause they get, we, we take those from estimates off of the websites before we put the budget together, and then when final numbers come in, they always fluctuate slightly, and so it doesn't change our budget, just some, where some of the money's coming from, twenty dollars here, forty dollars there. After all that said and done, I'm also happy to report that what we actually show on the tax levy of what we have to collect in property taxes is twelve hundred dollars less than what is projected because of some of that miscellaneous revenue. And then finally, I, well, I think we ought to emphasize to our taxpayers, our maximum levy that we could have collected in property taxes was nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. We are only collecting eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, which is a fifty-five thousand dollar savings of what you could have raised taxes on. I know some entities try to take it from the taxpayers as much as they possibly can and are legally allowed. This council has been very conservative and thoughtful of your taxpayers, and you don't go to the highest number possible. So we're saving fifty-five thousand dollars in that. And with that said, what we've projected is the tax rate of a one point, one dollar ninety-three cents per a thousand is, that's reduced to one dollar and seventy-two cents, so I think you ought to be proud of the action that you take.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, thank you.
Then, my last item was, Jim has provided me a survey that has been done of the fire station land, and the fire station building is not on land, it's owned by the town, so Chief, you probably won't be evicted in the next thirty days.
So we've evicted the cemetery and fire team.
That's right, I'm sorry, I think we can find another garage for you, so. But, we, we knew there was gonna maybe be an issue, but we thought it was part of the public, the right of way on that street, which was the town street, so we could just convert it from the right of way to actual ownership of that. But all the surveyor could find, I'm reading this like Jim, you the same way, it was part of the Hagerstown canal that had been built on, so therefore he ends up concluding ownership is unclear and unknown. So.
That was somebody's rent, but I don't know.
But as they say, possession is nine tenths of the law, there really is some truth to that. And so I, because of its continued use without anybody's objection over many, many years, it's, I think, gonna be necessary, at least prudent, to file a quiet title action for that area before we spend money on making any improvements to it, just so that there, we would, you put a published notice in the paper if anybody has claims against this, otherwise, so that we can have a court order deeming that as town property so that the fire department does not get evicted from there. But I think, don't you think that's a prudent act, Jim, from what you've seen?
Yeah.
So with that, I would just ask, and I don't think you have to take a vote, if you want to just kind of casually give me permission to go ahead and file that, after, it'll probably be right after the first of the year, as busy as December is, but file that, and within about a thirty day period, we can get that title cleared, so there's no problem going forward.
Yeah.
I'm hopeful this doesn't hold up anything on our grant, so.
That's why I think it's, I mean, if, one for the, we could probably live for years with it just the way it is, but I think we ought to clean it now so that there is no question on the grant.
And I think it'd be good if we say we're going through with that, I think that should be enough for them, so.
I don't think it's, I wonder if it's just something that just sort of fell through the cracks years ago and not got.
Yeah, how do we build a building there without somebody?
I'm gonna, I mean, I'm gonna at least look at the deep, there's, there's a parcel next to it of almost three quarters of an acre that is in the name of the volunteer fire department, but, and part of the building's on that, but then as it expanded out to the west, this part does not seem to have a supportive deed to it. Now, the other thing is, I could go down the courthouse records and historically look through all of that, but quite frankly, it's gonna be cheaper just to have me file this petition for quiet title than doing all that. And, and really, that's what the surveyor should have done, and did do, and couldn't find anything, so I don't think I need to duplicate his work when it's gonna be easier and less costly.
The ground just north of that should have been part of that too, but it, it's apparently not, it's been deeded over to the town.
Right, north of.
That's what I wondered, this year's section just, when that place got, fell through the cracks.
South Parkway there, they just didn't get it, did they?
Yeah.
But where the, the old water ball courts are and everything, that is on town.
See, we, a long time back in eighty-six, we had to deed where the water ball court was at to the town, but all the whole section was the fire departments, and I think the fire department may still own from water ball court to the fence. We couldn't put the water ball court on, it had to be on city property.
Yeah.
So I'll get with the surveyor, he needs to just do a boundary, legal, meet some bounds of that, so I can put that in the petition, but I'll call Gordon just to get that from this here, so. Sure, and that's all I've got for now, thanks.
And we had some guests here, did you need anything?
He needs you guys.
Did you have anything?
No, no, we're here for the outcome of what's going on.
Okay. Anybody else?
We never went back to Seth.
Oh, Seth.
Yep. I just wanted to, my counsel note, a project I've been working on for quite a while this year, Blue Buffalo has already been one of our great partners, they provide dog food for not only our canine, but almost all the canines around Wayne County and surrounding areas. But I came with them with an idea, met with them, a lot of times they just donate money or things, so I thought, do a little different, what I did was partner with them in doing this little dog, like Jesse has his name on it, has police, has our badge on it, and then Jesse's special badge, and then on the other side is with General Mills, Blue Buffalo. They just came in today, so shortly we're gonna be selling these, a way to raise money, so that way continue training and other things with the canine to help pay for, so we'll be posting these soon to try and sell and raise some money for us.
Do you know what the cost is gonna be?
I think we were, I was looking at ones, twenty-five and thirty, we've got another one set that has like his goggles he wears, and we only, only have a hundred of them, so we got twenty-five with the goggles and then seventy-five without it, so. So eventually we'll sell them here at the office, and then Blue Buffalo's gonna be.
Oh, it's Jesse.
So seventy-five dollars if they don't have goggles and twenty-five dollars?
No, no, twenty-five and thirty.
Okay.
Twenty-five, but we only have, we have seventy, sorry, we have seventy-five of the ones without goggles and only twenty-five with the ones with goggles. So, just let Blue Buffalo know they were in today, so I'll be meeting with them this week, and they'll be selling some, a lot of their employees want some, and, but we'll have it and work on getting things set up online and advertising to let people know we have them, and hopefully raise some money for, you know, and I'll pass around everyone, look at it.
It goes to canine, huh?
Yeah.
Great idea, yeah, yeah.
It's cool. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Good luck.
Probably get to make one before Christmas.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
And show you a little picture with him, with the dog standing like Jesse, with Buffalo poses to have.
So people will just buy them here?
I'll have different ways, I was gonna, that way if people are from away from here that want one, I was gonna go to the post office, get the flat rate shipping, figure out how much that is, but, yeah, well, if Sherry and Glendora don't mind, I know they do other stuff, but we'll, yeah, we'll be selling here during business hours, and Blue Buffalo, I know, is gonna be wanting to have some there too, and then we were kind of doing, probably do like just a, people pay and release, and then Blue Buffalo's wanting to do like an event at their facility for some, like the pickup, so coordinate like when we can do all that, but just kind of get pre-orders in, let people know, and then get them out, and hopefully sell them all, and Blue Buffalo has said if we do great with this one, they're inclined to do another round with us, so. They're a very supportive partner with us.
They provided them, but their cost, it's all profit to your canine and the other?
Correct, yeah.
That's awesome. If you recall, we contributed our, our money that we had in partnership with them to get them, so.
All right, thanks Seth.
No problem.
Hey, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I, I got one more thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The, the trash pickup on the twenty-sixth of December, well, our, I'm sorry, our regular trash pickup is on Monday, the twenty-fifth, and they're gonna be closed, Rumpkey will be closed, they'll pick it up on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, and then the next week will be the Tuesday, January second.
Move it back one day.
Move it up. Cause they pick up on Monday, so it'll be the next day.
Tuesday. Well, it depends on where you're looking. All right.
You're not gonna mention that this is your last meeting?
No, no.
We have a salary meeting.
We have salary.
Yeah, I got one more, I got one more.
And what's the date, time of day?
Um.
Eleven.
Eighteenth at five.
I see eleven.
Eighteenth at five, next Monday at five.
Oh, today's the eleven.
Yeah.
I knew I had eleven somewhere, yeah, yeah.
Well, we have to at least thank Steve for all his years of service.
We tried to annex it real quickly, but that didn't work.
Didn't work.
And your family's here, you wanna introduce them to everybody?
You wanna be introduced?
Yeah.
Thank you.
He has a race.
Thanks for giving us your money, Steve, appreciate it.
Yep, thanks for coming.
Yeah, we will, all his dry jokes.
Well, you can still come in and tell jokes if you want to.
Yep.
How many years, Steve, it's been like twenty-three? Twenty-three, and I think it was two thousand and five.
We are gonna miss you, you've been awesome.
Thanks for your service, Steve, true.
We gotta get that house annexed.
I know.
Give you four years.
In time for the next election.
Yeah, in time for the next one, and he can run.
Who am I gonna run against, though? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, now you say your last words.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
That's good.
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.